Welcome everyone to the March 3rd, 2020 Union County Land Board. I ask you to please rise as we turn and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. We have a voting tonight on the application that Lee said we're good there. I ask the board, please take a look at the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions that need to be made that you've noticed? If not, I call for a motion to accept the agenda either way.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Eric. We have a second. Thank you Patrick. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you very much. You also have in your packet the minutes of February 4th, 2020, board meeting. Hope you've had a chance to look at those. If not, please do at this time. And we will entertain any changes, any additions or deletions to the agenda. And we would also ask when we're ready for approval of the agenda or approval with any changes or deletions. Do you have any comments on the minutes?
Motion to approve, Ms. Ritten.
Thank you Russell, appreciate that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Charlie. All those in favor, raise your hand, right hand. Okay, we're there. Okay, tonight we're going to review a request. And I'm going to ask that the audience, that you keep your comments wherever you fall from public comments for three minutes. I'm going to ask Patrick to help us sign that, which he will again tonight. Speak clearly into the mic up here. State your name, your address, whether you're for or against. And we'd also ask that the decor be kept in a civil manner. And that we treat each side with due respect. And with that, we'll move through this very fast. If we get out of hand, we will handle it at that time immediately. So with that, Lee, are you ready to go forward? We're going to look at CZ 2019014 for the consideration of recommendation to approve and amend the zoning map of Union County by rezoning three parcels of land. And I'm going to let Lee talk to us about where we're going with this. Lee, thank you.
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is CZ 2019014. It has a working title of Oakton Mixed Use Development right now. This is a request to amend the zoning map of Union County by rezoning three parcels of land from its current district of R40, which is residential, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, to R4 conditional and B2 conditional, which is B2's community business. The applicant requests this rezoning in order to develop a single-family, age-restricted neighborhood with a maximum of 46 duplex and triplex units. And it also contains approximately two acres of commercial. The project's access will come from one access point off of Providence Road. Setbacks will be 20 feet in the front, 25 feet in the rear, and 10 feet on the sides. And the overall density of the residential portion is around five acres, five units per acre, depending on how you figure the commercial, it's a little bit less or a little bit more, but it's approximately five. Since this is a conditional rezoner request, the district will be bound by all conceptual plans submitted as part of the application and any conditions placed on the application. Those conditions can be negotiated by the planning board, by the board of commissioners, by residents, by anybody with the applicant. Conditions become effective if the applicant and the boards agree that those are conditions that are placed on the petition. This is the conceptual plan that was submitted in support of the application. You can see again, 46 attached residential units, one point of access on to Providence Road, and two acres of, approximately two acres of limited-use commercial development. These are some photographs of the general area. So the first one at the top left is looking into the property from Providence Road. And then the ones, these are looking, I guess the top right and bottom right are both looking north and south along Providence Road. And then this is looking, again, kind of across the street from the property. Existing land use, the parcels are zoned R40. It's about 11 acres based on the conceptual plan. And the land is currently primarily used as agricultural property. You can see that this is, the properties that are highlighted in black are the pieces that are part of the rezoning application. There's a piece behind it that's not included. You can see that. That's this piece right here with that single-family home. You can see that it is what we call a donut hole. It's completely surrounded by Waxaw. It's not connected to any other, unincorporated, with the exception of this piece, Union County property. As far as environmental features, there is a pond on the property that you can see will be converted to part of their stormwater facility. And I'm assuming an amenity to the neighborhood. The only other environmental features on the property are that the stream, or the pond does have some wetlands associated with it, which was, the applicant took that into consideration on development of the plan. There are a couple of streams, one on the west side of the property and one on the south side. As far as transportation impacts, or not impacts, but as far as the transportation network in the area, Highway 16, that is the primary road. That is the road that this is taking access off of. That is funded for widening to multiple lanes. That will be a four-lane divided, median-divided road in the future. I will say that we used to put dates on these, but we don't do that anymore because we are not 100% sure when that construction is going to happen. Few traffic counts in the area, and I've actually got a separate map if you want to zoom in or out, that has NC DOT's daily traffic counts on here. Closest one to this project was just a tad south. On 2017, it was about 16,000 vehicle trips a day. You can see this one, this is actually, we noticed that we put this in the wrong place. This is actually, this 3,700 vehicle trips a day should be on Gray Byram. So we have 3,100 trips a day on Gray Byram. Bonds Grove is 3,100 trips a day. And I can bring up the map if you want to see DOT's, the actual numbers, but that's, we just misplaced the tag there.
Would you like me to bring that map?
Yeah, sure. So there's the 3,700 on Gray Byram. And there's the 3,100 vehicle trips on Bonds Grove. You see, there's the 16,000 number that was just to the south on Providence Road. You can see that a little bit further south of this, you've got some higher traffic counts. You've got 27,000, or 20,000 vehicle trips just south of Cuthbertson Road in Kensington. They drop off a little bit as you move north. We didn't go in to try to figure out why, but I have, I'm assuming that a lot of people are turning right. Some people are turning right to go to the high school, little school, and then they're probably continuing to Newtown. You probably have a lot of people turning left, going over to 521, going up to the Valentine area.
Also Kensington.
Yes, that's right. So you're dropping a little bit as you move north, but then, once you get past, once you get past Bonds Grove, you do start picking that traffic up again. So you have 19,000 right before Newtown, 20,000 just after Newtown. By the time you get to the county line, you're at 40,000 vehicle trips a day. So any further, any questions about these traffic counts or?
How often do they do these traffic counts? This is 2017.
Yeah, so they have a schedule of when they do these. For example, the one on Bonds Grove, you can see, that's actually a 2016 count. So they'll, they don't do these every year, but they kind of stagger them. So they'll do some in this area this year, they'll do some next year, they'll do some, you know, the third year, and they just kind of constantly keep them in a rotation.
So go back up to Gray Byram again.
Right there. So that's a 2017 count.
Reason I ask this, I got caught in that traffic Monday, like I told you about.
Yeah, yeah.
Took me, we were going five miles an hour all the way up to the Whelan subdivision towards Newtown, Monday morning.
Right.
Terrible. Thank you, Lee.
Sure. The zoning in the area was a mix of a lot of different things, but we tried to make this as simple as we could because we tried to look at, you've got Marvin that's pretty close by. You've got Waxaw, again, that's completely surrounding this property. The current zoning in Union County on this piece is R40. So it's residential, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size. That's kind of mirrored over here, a little bit to the southwest in Marvin. Their zoning is also R40. You've got some pockets in Waxaw. This is R1, which is 40,000 square foot. That's kind of like a R40 in the county. To the south of this, you've got, this is all in Waxaw. This is commercial. So this is kind of at the corner of Gray Byram and Providence Road. So this is all zoned commercial right now. To the north in Waxaw, you have R4. So that's a little bit denser zoning district than what we have here, you know, in R40. Surrounding land uses are primarily medium-density residential and agriculture. Depending on your definition of medium and high, you might say it's high-density. Some people would consider that medium. But I would say it's a mix of medium and higher-density residential and agricultural properties. The properties in the area are served, well, most, a lot of properties in the area, I should say, are served by Union County Water and Sewer. This property, or this project is proposed to be served by Union County Public Works. You have a water line on Providence Road, and there's a sewer line on the property right now. And these parcels have been zoned R40 since Union County established zoning. There's never been any, through Union County, there have never been any rezoning requests or special use permits related to this property.
Where is the sewer hooked up on this property?
It's going along this stream in the back.
Pardon?
Along the stream in the back.
Another question. There are, I believe, two access roads. There's property back up behind that.
Yes, so I'm about to get into, I want to get into some of that in just a second. And we'll talk about some other agencies that we've coordinated with here, actually, right now. We did send this to the schools for an evaluation. It is proposed to be an age-restricted development, but we still send this to the schools to get their feedback anyway. I'm not going to read their entire statement because it's pretty long. I'm just going to hit some highlights. They basically commented that this duplex subdivision of 46 units is age-restricted, however, will be in the following school attendance areas. Sandy Ridge Elementary, which is currently at 95% of rated capacity. Marvin Ridge Middle, which is currently at 102% of rated capacity. And Marvin Ridge High School, which is currently at 100% of rated capacity. And they note that although the above schools are the current assignments for this area, Union County Public Schools reserves the right to modify assignments in order to optimize facility utilization and efficiency. And then they go on to list several subdivisions that have planned but not built housing units within Sandy Ridge. Those total up to about 106 planned but unbuilt units in the Sandy Ridge Elementary School area. And in the Marvin Ridge Middle School and High School attendance area, there's about 314 unbuilt but planned residential units. They also note that per board policy, none of these three schools are any longer accepting any transfers due to high enrollment. Additional residential construction contributes to high enrollments, which in turn exacerbate problems such as additional mobile classrooms, inadequate capacity for food service and restroom facilities, rationing of access to the media center, insufficient parking and queuing space for parents to safely deliver or pick up their children, and inadequate planning and meeting space for additional staff. We did coordinate with NC DOT regarding this project. And initially, we were under the impression that DOT was going to restrict the access to write-in, write-out. I did have a conversation with Lee Ainsworth yesterday. And they are willing to, because it's 46 units, they are not going to restrict it to write-in, write-out. It can have a full-access movement. Now, that's based on the residential component. As you seen in your application, the B2 piece is zoned, they're asking for a zoning of a B2 designation. It is conditional, the applicant, we didn't have it in time for your agenda packets, but the applicant is proposing to restrict uses, which is one of the things you can do under the county's ordinance when it comes to conditional rezoning. You can choose to either have a full-blown plan with, you know, site location shown as far as buildings and densities, or you can do a combination. You can do that and potentially restrict uses, or you can just go and restrict uses. So what the applicant's proposing to do in this project is they have a specific plan, a conceptual plan, I should say, for the residential component. And they've gone in and restricted some of the uses that are allowed in B2. So they're not going to allow every single B2 use, or allowed use in B2. So what DOT has said is for the residential component, the 46 units, they are fine with full movement. However, that will be reevaluated whenever the commercial piece develops. So depending on what that commercial use is, and depending on the traffic impacts that that commercial use has, they may or may not be able to continue using that full-access movement. I'll give you an example. And this was an example that I talked with DOT about. If this was a small office use, a full-access would probably still be okay. If this were a gas station or a fast-food restaurant, they would probably be restricted to write-in, write-out. Because those are typically high-traffic generators. And then DOT also wanted me to note to you guys that ultimately, this will be a write-in, write-out anyway when Highway 16 is built. Because it will be median-divided. And they noted that this probably would not get an access. We also have talked to Union County Public Works. That's where we got, they noted that 16, there's a water line on 16, and there was sewer on the property. So they didn't feel like water sewer would be an issue on this project. We did send these plans, since it's completely surrounded by Waxaw, we did send the plans over to Waxaw, and since Marvin's close by, we did send the plans over to Marvin as well, just so they could have a look. And we received written comments from Waxaw, and I will go over those. They were in staff report, but I'll kind of go over them here first, so everybody can hear. We didn't receive anything from Marvin, but I know that Rohit is here, so I think he's going to speak on this as well. So as far as the comp plan, this is in our mixed residential category. The mixed residential category does anticipate higher-density residential projects and different housing options other than detached, single-family residential. In addition, the mixed residential category anticipates some commercial activity near clusters of existing and proposed residential construction. Waxaw's planning staff comments were as follows. The town would like to see the street connection, and that's what you were, Don, what you were talking about earlier. Fair Green Avenue, I think is the name of it, is, it stubs to this property line. So the town of Waxaw has noted that they would like to see that street connection made as part of this development. This would, they know that this would allow for more access options to Highway 16 and Gray Byram once the southern parcels down here are developed in the town. They also noted that the layout of commercial and townhouses is currently consistent with their future land use plan. They do note that they are in the process of updating their land use plan. And their early draft has the property split with commercial in the front and medium-density, single-family designation in the rear to be more consistent with the surrounding subdivisions to the north and to the west. I also note that the county is also in the process of updating. It's, as you know, it's comprehensive plan. We're not quite as far along as Waxaw. We are just in the visioning stage, so we don't have any land use designations set. But that is something to take into consideration, is that we are currently going through that process too. So the overall residential density and commercial component are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff does, however, and these were noted in our comments as well, as well as Waxaw's. We do continue to, we would like to see this connection to Fair Green Avenue made as well, or a redesign to accommodate that future connection. In addition, and I think the commercial component has done part of this, we would like to see some limitations on the types and densities of commercial development allowed in the commercial component of the concept plan. If the project is approved, or if the board makes a recommendation to approve this project, staff would suggest that these items be taken into consideration along with some restrictions on design and building materials. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Appreciate your clarification about looking up where Barrington is.
Yes.
And what I was talking about, visualizing it straight back. There's a, I believe it's a British brick house. It's not part of Barrington Oaks.
Right. I think you're talking about this one right here, I think.
What about the driveway that takes him back to that house right now?
He actually has built a new driveway off of Fair Green Avenue. So he worked with the town of Waxaw to come in and build a new driveway coming off of Fair Green.
So those two roads that are gravel out here, empty zone, two problems, would be closed off?
Yes, so you'll have this one access point to Providence Road. So this current driveway, I believe that piece is going to be used as a buffer between this development, development to the north.
Could you delineate, you said it was Fair Green Road, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's back here, kind of on the southwest side. Kind of, do you see where my cursor is? Actually, let me bring up the GIS so you can see that a little bit better.
And y'all are asking for a, instead of cul-de-sac, you're asking for a connection, stub connection to that.
Yeah, let me bring this up on GIS so you can really see what I'm talking about. So here's Fair Green Avenue that comes around and stubs on the western side. So again, this piece is not in this rezoning. So this piece is not part of the rezoning. This is where, these pieces are part of the rezoning. But we would like either a redesign to accommodate a future potential connection. When a town, when Waxaw approved this stub out, that was the intent. They wanted this connection made. Otherwise, this would have been a cul-de-sac.
But now another landowner owns the...
It's actually the same landowner. Oh, has it been sold? Oh, okay. Because this one still says McCorkle Farms LLC, and that one says McCorkle Farms LLC.
And that one?
So it's been sold since, or? So you don't own this piece? Are you not for McCorkle Farms LLC?
Yes, we don't own.
We were always under the impression that this was, because it's, I mean, that's the tax ownership right there, McCorkle Farms LLC, for a 4.03 acre piece. We were always under the impression that, that's wrong?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
So if I'm not mistaken, I think that house, that house was sold not too long.
Yes, it was. So did you own it previous to that?
Yes.
Yes. So the comments that staff made were actually made while that was owned by him. So I still feel they're valid. They may not, so we, the staff has made that comment all along in this process. Actually, you can look at our comments that were sent back on our electronic planner view. They're still, they still show up. They went back to the engineer. Even if this is not owned, a redesign could work, I think, where you could potentially make this future connection. Now, there is a stream, so it's not going to be cheap. But otherwise, this connection's lost.
But as long as the other people own it, I mean, you've got to deal with them in order to have a stub.
That is true. That is true. I was not aware that this piece had been sold. We were going by what the tax records show, which they may not have had a chance to update them yet. But that's been a comment that Bjorn and myself have made since this started. This was, they were dealing with a different engineer when this process started off. And that's a comment we made to her. And that's a comment that still shows up when you look at our comments that were sent back on this rezoning.
Lee, I appreciate you clarifying all this. What I'm trying to get at is, I would hope for that homeowner that recently purchased that house to be closed in and not having access to get out.
Sure. And that's just, and they have a way out. They did build a, I'm pretty sure that's correct. They built a driveway off of Fair Green, yeah. So there is a driveway coming off of Fair Green. So they have a way in and out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the clarification.
No problem.
Any more questions for Lee?
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Keith Rains. I work for McKimmon Creed. I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'm at 8020 Tower Point Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina. Like Lee said, he did a pretty good presentation of this. You know, the way we looked at that piece that you're talking about, that is stubbed to now, it could easily be developed as a radius turn and a cul-de-sac put in that if the landowner that currently purchased the house, recently purchased the house, could decide that they want to sell, they could develop that. It just wouldn't get you out to Providence Road. And plus, from an environmental standpoint, we'd have to cross a creek, like Lee said, and those are not necessarily cheap. Or from an environmental impact, sometimes those get pretty hairy as far as the amount of work that has to be done. I'm here for any questions. I do have Jim, Jim Limberger is the one that is going to be maintaining the commercial piece. Here's a list of the, you can hand these out. Of the permitted uses that we changed to from, initially, this was a B-four request for the commercial, and now we went to B-two. That's why we had to have a second neighborhood meeting. And he strikes through some of the uses that are allowed under the B-two that he is going to allow to be part of the record for this site. Bob Bennett from Essex Home, which is now Stanley Martin, they, they are going to be doing the houses, and it is an age-restricted fifty-five and older development. I'd met with NC DOT personally myself, because there was a lot of concern from the neighbors about restricting this to a right-in and right-out, and the, the movement leaving the site would force people to potentially go through their subdivision across the street. And NC DOT told me, and I forwarded the information to Lee, that, that as of right now, you know, for the residential portion, they will allow full access and full movement. There is a condition on this plan that when the commercial use is determined, that a TIA would be required, and at that point, any traffic improvements at that time would be, you know, the, the commercial portion would have to deal with that.
Describe the full use.
Left turnout, right turnout, just waiting on traffic. So, I mean...
Have you been down there and drove that?
Yes, I have.
You can't turn it there.
I understand that. We had a lot of pushback from the neighbors across the street that they didn't want a right-turn only movement, because if you make a right and go toward Waxaw, that potentially people would do a U-turn through their development and go by their swimming pool and come back out where they do have full access, and that, and that was a big concern. I was surprised that NC DOT agreed to that, but it is a, going to be a four-lane divided highway in the future with a tip. And so, depending on what...
When's the time in the future?
We, I'll, I'll let Lee answer that question for you. I, I don't know.
Twenty twenty-five?
It's pretty much twenty twenty-four right now.
It's twenty twenty-four?
We used to put those in our presentations, but DOT said to push back a lot of projects. Long story long, but we don't, we don't put those dates in our presentations.
Yeah, and depending on the use, even, and when I met with DOT personally, they, they even told me that if the commercial is a low-impact type commercial development, that even then, when the tip comes through, they possibly would allow a, a, to maintain a full access at that location. Just depends on the use. And, and it's not going to be a concrete median, it's a grass median, divided highway. So, that's, that's what they told me, and I forwarded the information to Lee, so he could reach back out to them to confirm that, because I didn't want it to come just from me. It needed to come from the, from the state.
So if this is a right-in, right-out eventually, that means there's going to be another Michigan left somewhere?
Potentially, it could be. It depends on what the commercial use is. But there is a commitment on the plan and a condition on this plan that when the commercial use is known, that a full-blown TIA will have to be done and reviewed by NC DOT, Union County, and those improvements will be the requirement of the commercial component.
And, Mr. Harrison, I think your question was more, when the project, when the sixteen widening is actually completed? Was that, that was your question? Would there be a Michigan?
If it's, if it's a right-out only, there's got to be a U-turn somewhere for everybody to go back up Providence Road.
Yes, you'd have to go south and eventually make that.
Yeah, they talked about, they have to space those things about eight hundred feet apart to be able to make that, that turn.
How far down is Providence going to go when it widens? It's not, it's not going into Waxaw?
No.
And Waxaw said they didn't want it. So how far down is it going?
To be honest with you, I don't recall.
All these proposed uses, I see several of the strike-throughs are the S. If I'm not mistaken, that requires either a variance or another SUP process.
A special exception, yeah.
So, you wouldn't be granted anything by right.
He's basically saying, I think I hit something here. He's basically saying that not even as a special exception, he's willing to allow that use. Anything struck through, he doesn't want to, he will restrict the property to not allow it. And he's here, if you have any questions for him? If you have any questions on the, the homes?
So if they don't allow or it doesn't happen, Fair Green add a connection? And it's a one-in, one-way in, one-way out?
We do have two stub streets to the south to the commercial pieces in Waxaw.
Yeah, there's two cul-de-sacs that are on the...
The right-aways are extended into the, to the southern property that's, it's owned commercial in Waxaw. So potentially, in the future, when those develop, they would be connected. So how do you get back to the site plan, you know? You better come over here. I'll mess it up. Yeah, those, those two cul-de-sacs that are headed south toward Waxaw, that's their stub streets to the southern portion of that commercial piece, to the northern portion of that commercial piece.
Those are, those are shown as cul-de-sacs on the plan. The fire marshal, like so, is showing us cul-de-sacs, especially when you have a street. Is that kind of lead?
Yeah, anytime it's over a hundred and fifty feet, we have to have a turnaround that a fire truck can make. But you can look on that plan, you can see the right-ways reserved all the way to the property line. So the cul-de-sac in the future will be eliminated, and it'll be extended into the commercial piece.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Age restricted. Why are you putting the tri-level in there? It's upstairs.
That's, I'm an engineer. I'll let, um...
Okay, we'll, we'll get to him in a minute then. Okay. Probably you might know.
The question is, age restricted, why are you... It's not tri-level, it's triplex. Means there's three buildings in, three, three together.
Upstairs?
No, it's three attached units.
They're all four?
They're all single ranch level, they're all ranch-level houses, yeah. A triplex means there's three of them in one attached building.
No problem.
Okay.
Is there garages on these?
Garage?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Let me throw out another thing, is we do, in the conditions, we did agree to provide a cross-access easement across the commercial piece to the southern piece as well. So that you will, you could access anything to the south through the commercial piece or the two stub streets that are in the residential.
We're just talking about, there's a store just to the south, on the same side of the road as this piece, just immediately to the south. We ask for a cross-access easement in case that piece ever redevelops, and this is the first piece to develop.
What's the store?
Southern.
Is it some kind of design store or something like that?
Yeah.
Looks like a little white house?
Yep.
Is there a specific location for that easement, or is it a blank easement across the...
No, it's just a blank easement across, wherever it makes the most sense, depending on the use.
Thank you.
If this, kind of the way that would work is, if this, that, that piece is in Waxaw, and if either one of these ever redeveloped, we would work with the tenant and the applicants to locate where the, the best place for that would be.
And typically, it's going to be as far into the, into the new road as possible, just because of separation off of Providence Road. But again, that's something that's in the future, depending on what the use is. And what the, Union County has Waxaw and NC DOT direct. It may be sufficient just to use the two cul-de-sacs rather than something across that commercial piece, but that's to be determined.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. No gentleman invited? Or did you want to say any comments? Do call up. Your name and the address, please.
It's Robert Bennett. I'm at nine-nine-oh-five Strike the Gold Lane in Waxaw, North Carolina, two-eight-one-seven-three. I just came up to see if you guys have any comments about the actual homes on the property.
Do you have any elevations prepared?
I do not.
Material choices?
No, they're pretty much all brick fronts and hardy plating, three sides, if you will, with a two-car garage.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there anything you wanted to clarify?
No, sorry.
I appreciate you clarifying the other.
Yeah, it was, they, they all have two-car garages and all be one-story ranch homes. And age restricted as well, as you talked about.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the speakers that signed up. Jack Lindberg.
Jack Lindberg, eighty-one-twenty-five Madribel Court, Waxaw, North Carolina. Want to thank the board for the job that you do to manage the growth, asking all your good questions. I want to make three points and do them quickly. Number one, this, as Lee said, is surrounded by Waxaw. Therefore, I would request that the board take seriously the input from the town of Waxaw, especially their desire for another ingress egress off Fairview. I think that would make Union County and Waxaw good neighbors if you listen to what their request is, as this is a donut hole in the middle of that. That's point number one. Point number two, the first neighborhood meeting was on January seventh. There was a subsequent one because they changed the request for the commercial piece, the zoning request. I've been present at all those meetings with other folks from the surrounding communities, developments, have had meetings with folks in those developments. We were told from January seventh up until tonight that this would be a right-in, right-out. We had numerous concerns about the right-in, right-out, the impact that that would have on the neighboring community's traffic-wise. I will not address that if that is off the table at this point. Let me address the full access. That is currently three lanes with center lane being for turning. On the area here, if I can give it, this is Summer Led, okay? This is an entrance into the subdivision here. From Summer Led to what will be the entrance in here is four hundred feet. There is... Okay, thank you, Lee. Go on. So from, from Summer Led here, up to where the entrance will be, is four hundred feet. You can't quite see it on this map, but currently, if you're coming south on Providence Road and want to turn into Summer Led, that was required by DOT to have a, an entrance, a center lane entrance. That is currently two-hundred-and-forty feet. Folks coming down have two-hundred-and-forty feet of center lane to turn left. The entire distance here is four hundred feet. That means that center lane to turn into Summer Led begins about here. That would mean if there is a full access, those coming north from Waxaw to turn into this subdivision that's proposed will have at most a hundred-and-forty feet, and you will have folks trying to go into this neighborhood and into the other neighborhood, passing over each other in a span of four hundred feet. I did a quick look on the Route sixteen, Providence Road, on every place from here up until the county line up north, where there is a turn lane, and it is always two-hundred-and-forty feet. Therefore, I would assume, I do not know, that DOT would require two-hundred-and-forty feet for that lane. You simply do not have that between here and here. Three minutes? That is my, that's my presentation to you. I simply hope that you folks would look at that and recognize that the counts are, the traffic counts are at least three years old.
I've got one question for him. Is Summer Led, is, is it a right and a left end? It's both ways?
Uh, if you're coming out of Summer Led, you can turn left or right. That is full access.
Okay. And also, what is that?
This is Calistoga. That is also full access.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to go on to our next speaker. If anybody with the applicant wants to talk or rebuttal any of this, we'll call that up after our speakers get through. I hope I pronounced this right. Rohit, you're welcome.
Hello again. My name is Rohit. I'm in Munchie. I'm the planner for Village Marvin. And so I'm, I'm here to oppose the project as it is currently presented, but not to say that I would urge you to recommend denial. I have a few conditions that I would like to discuss. So first of all, I'm not opposed to the density. It's almost five units per acre, but because I think that dense housing plus walkable commercial is one of the things that makes some of the great cities, you know, so livable and great. But in this case, when the infrastructure can't keep up, that's when things start falling apart. And in this case, the infrastructure that is not keeping up is Providence Road. So, you know, we talked about the stubs, so I'm not going to go too much into that. But I do want to introduce that we do have a rezoning application that we received in Marvin at the corner of Bonds Grove Church Road for commercial, a commercial conditional district. And they did a TIA, which showed that the, both Bonds Grove Church intersection and the Gray Byram intersections are desperately failing in level of service, and it's only mitigated by the fact that people actually go all the way back to Crane Road to go up to Newtown Road to turn left at Providence Road at the traffic light. And the other thing is that people actually stop on Providence Road to let people turn left. And both of those issues are a, you know, a total failure of intersections. So, we've actually negotiated with the applicant for the rezoning in Marvin to say that they would delay the project until a traffic light is installed at that intersection. So, I'm here to urge you that you consider something similar for the commercial portion of this project. So, in the end, I'm not here to say that they should not, they should be rejected, but, you know, there are some issues that, that this project poses. And I, I think it's, it's a fine concept, but the plan is not, you know, executed completely well. And I want to also to come here, so in case you had any other questions about that rezoning or any other questions you want to ask me.
Do you, do you live in that area there?
Um, I don't live in this area, but I do live close to the area, yes. I live kind of in this direction. So I don't live on Providence Road, but I live close to Johnston Road. The comments I'm hearing is because when we had our rezoning for this corner, we had a lot of passionate residents come and tell us about how absolutely atrocious the traffic was. And not only did I go out there to see it for myself during rush hour and not, but also we had the TIA that showed that both intersections were failing, like F-grade. Yes.
Well, let me ask you a question. You were at, I believe, our last meeting?
Yes, and I meant to speak to this at the last meeting, but...
Real quick, if you could do us a future favor?
Yes.
Not criticism, not criticism. Ask a question. Are you, are you here only speaking on behalf of Marvin?
Yes, I'm speaking as the planner for Marvin.
Yeah, what I'd like to ask you to do, if you could, ahead of time, like Waxaw did, submit that to where to go into their report, so we can study it a day or two before.
Sure.
Will you do that for us?
Sure thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any questions for the planner for Marvin? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Next speaker is Jim Lindberger.
Yes, I'm the property owner. Didn't know if you had any questions for me. I do have a couple of comments in reference to what some others have said, in reference to the property. When it comes to, we did, they did allow two accesses for the additional commercial property. Next door, actually, the rear of that property is, I think, is multifamily. Instead of just commercial back here, where they were... Instead of just commercial back here, where they were, in reference to tying this property in, it could be an easy fix for maybe this fifty acre development of commercial next door that could tie into the two cul-de-sacs that they had actually, um, uh, the Essex has put in for their development. And I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic. I've lived in Waxaw for twenty years. I've seen it grow and, uh, Providence Road has been, uh, a traffic hub for all the people that's been, uh, moving into the area. But I have lived here for twenty years and I've seen, I've seen the growth. We are talking about only a two acre piece of, uh, a two acre commercial property versus a fifty acre tract next door. You know, the impact of this small tract, I don't believe is gonna be a, uh, a big impact as much as everybody perceives it to be. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak.
Your question is for this gentleman? Thank you. Keith Ryanes.
That's me again. Um, just to follow up with some of the things that were brought up, you know, uh, there is a condition on there that when the commercial is, the use is known, a TIA will be done. And the scoping meeting that will have to happen between NC DOT, Union County will take into account any future developments, any developments that are proposed. And those traffic impacts will be weighed into what this commercial tract will do. And, and, you know, Lee can, can kinda concur with that or just let you know that it's a, it's not just an impact of that. It's an impact of any known future stuff that's coming, the existing traffic conditions, and then what's proposed. So, that, that whole, that is a condition of this, this, uh, rezoning. Secondly, and I failed to mention earlier, and I know, uh, there were some concerns about the, the lane width there. When I met with NC DOT, they told us that to the north, there's pretty much a three lane section there now, but they will require us for the full access, we will have to do a three lane section meeting their requirements to the south towards Waxaw, so that basically they're, we call it a suicide lane. They don't like to call you, they don't like to, to call that, but that's, that's what it is. So that the full access to the left turn from the south, we'll have a three lane section with the, the appropriate tapers that NC DOT requires, even though likely when the tip comes through, some of that will get torn back out. But it will, they will require us for our driveway permit to provide a full three lane section for the full access movement that we're proposing, that they've agreed to.
Did you happen to, uh, chance to visit with the town of Waxaw or the Great Byram?
No, I did not. No.
What about Bonds Grove, between Waxaw or with Marvin?
No, we, we dealt with the municipality that we were, and, and, and like Lee would tell you, uh, you know, there was another engineer on this before. We came in after the fact. Uh, we strictly have dealt with Union County and NC DOT on this.
No, no problem, just ask them.
But I just want to make sure that, you know, there was a concern about the, uh, the northern movement and the left turn is gonna stall traffic. DOT will require us to make the three lane section that eventually will get torn out when they do the tip road, the tip, the tip project.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Ryanes, the, the streets inside the project, how wide are they?
Uh, don't, this is, this standard, uh, uh, NC DOT, uh, it's probably twenty-four foot asphalt with two foot curb and gutter. So, I mean, it'll, it'll be a standard residential street, just like what's across the street from it. I think it's a sixty foot right away. You know, it's what's, what's in the regs now is what we've got laid out.
Were the street widths approved of, uh, Fire Chief, Fire Department?
Yes, it, it, any development that, that we do in Union County has to meet those requirements. So, yeah, it'll be, and, and, you know, the streets, and I think it even says it in the conditions, the streets will be, will meet the condition, will meet the, uh, dimensions and the requirements of Union County and NC DOT as applicable. So, it's not a reduced sized street.
Does that meet the, uh, requirements for a proposed commercial for that front portion as well, or is that just residential standards?
That's, that's, that's something that we will discuss when we get further into it once the use is known, but the right of way is there, so we may have a wider street section at the beginning and then we taper down, but it really just depends on, uh, when we get into the true design of the project and we know what that commercial use is gonna be. More than likely, there's a wider commercial street section that's required up to where we get to the residential, and then we'll just taper down to the residential street section. But the right of way is sufficient for both of them.
Here's a comment.
What's the proposal building time when we just start, if everything was approved?
I mean, we've got the continuation of this, which is, I mean, Lee, I mean, what's the timeframe for getting through this process?
This process, uh, commissioners will, I guess, likely consider this in April, so, you know, we'll have more than likely an answer in mid-April, that, that second meeting. And then, depending on how long.
Yeah.
If, if it's approved, then, you know, there's sketch plan, preliminary plan, final planning, construction.
Once, once we get zoning in place, you're probably looking at, you're, you're probably not moving any dirt for about a year. And then you got probably four to five months of construction on the residential side before you start seeing houses going up. So, you're probably a year and a half, close to a year and a half out from April.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryanes? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, John. Bob Bennett.
I'll get it.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, uh, we've had some people come in late. Does anybody else like to speak before we close the public comments? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Lee, any final comments?
So, you've heard some, some comments about traffic. You've heard various comments from the applicant and from, uh, people that spoke, uh, before or against it. You guys just really need to deliberate, consider any conditions you might wanna, um, talk to the applicant about. In the conditional rezonings, you, you guys, the planning board can sug- can suggest, um, conditions, um, in the applicant. The conditional rezonings, it's not like there's a quasi judicial board of adjustment where you could place condition. Both applicant and the boards have to agree, um, to, to those conditions. Usually those conditions relate to things that you hear, uh, being discussed, like traffic, things like, uh, design, how, how's it gonna look, how the commercial may look. Again, if you guys wanna do that, um, how's the time to kinda negotiate with the, uh, with the applicant?
Any other comments?
No, sir.
At this time, Ed, I'd like to close the public comments portion.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know who, uh, the, the representative groups will answer this. Is this gonna be a covenant restricted fifty-five and older community? Fifty-five and older covenant restricted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Terry.
Thank you. We'd like to close the public comment portion of the agenda at this time, and we'd like to ask the planning board to publicly, publicly discuss the rezoning request, uh, without further input from the public. We may seek input and clarification if, if we need to from the planning staff or the applicant, or any of the speakers that have come forth tonight. So, hopefully the floor of the board for your thoughts and comments, et cetera. Jonathan?
Yeah, the first, first item I'd bring up is the elevations or lack thereof. I don't ever recall any type of, uh, rezoning request where I haven't seen elevations of some description, just so we know what we're getting into, um, especially duplex, triplex, and materials. I don't think it would be unreasonable to have a list of, uh, approved materials as a condition, just something formal. But, uh, definitely elevations for the board. Of course, I, I'll echo staff comments and, uh, comments from Town of Waxaw regarding the rear access. I feel as though that's necessary, especially given the poor condition of Providence Road. I don't have the utmost confidence in the NC DOT in resolving this issue anytime soon, given the budget crunch and a number of other items. So, I think it'd be best that, uh, we would mitigate that based on options available at the time, not just proposed, uh, cul-de-sacs and things of that nature. That may or may not happen on a property that may or may not get developed within any given time. I'd hate to, to do anything based on speculation. Another concern I had is spacing between the entrance and Colts Gate Road. You'll see it on the map up there on the screen. That's with full access, and I, I would assume that Colts Gate Road is full access as well. You could have a potential conflict. I know it was raised, uh, regarding the street, uh, that Summerfield across, but I'm talking on the same side of the road. And, uh, potentially getting to the need for XL or, or D cell lanes with the commercial use. Uh, most of these uses not being problematic, except there's two that stood out, uh, gas station and, uh, drive-through restaurant where you could potentially see a higher traffic count. And, uh, I think that would create more of a nightmare on Providence in that event. To that, and, uh, just to dig a little further in on, uh, Mr. Medlin's question, this, I understand is covenant restricted or is this deed restricted? And I'd want to get that clarified because there's significantly different enforcement mechanisms for something like that. So, those are my thoughts.
Do you like to address deed versus age? Clarify that?
I would have to get my attorney.
Pardon?
I would have, I mean, the restrictions, I apologize, Steve, sorry, sir. The restrictions are gonna be in the covenants bound by the actual, I don't, I don't, I'm not all versed in this, I'm not gonna talk about something I don't know too much about as far as the difference between the two. But it will be in the HOA documents, restrictions and part of the closing documents, if you will, for each, each home. So, I know, I don't know the distinct differences for what you're asking, so I'm not gonna just make something up up here.
I, I appreciate your honesty.
Yeah. So, does that answer your question? Can you help me out with that?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have a covenant version?
Uh, not yet. We don't do that until we record, uh, apply.
Typically, the way we've seen it done in the past is you have, uh, covenants such as, you know, which are being enforced by the HOA. And there'll be a, um, condition, uh, if it was approved, there would be a condition on the, on the zoning document. Our condition is generally not as restrictive as the covenant. Uh, we restrict ours to, we've had this conversation buzzed. Uh, we restrict ours to the federal, um, minimum, which is a...
Fifty-five, fifty-five, whatever, A B twenty split.
Usually we see that the restricted covenants that are enforced by the homeowner association are much more restrictive than that. That, that's why it's a question, they've been written, so that maybe...
Yeah, it came up with one of the, um, homeowners nearby. I actually have, I had my attorney print out what we were actually gonna restrict and how we're gonna restrict it. If you want me to give you a copy of these, I'd be glad to give them to you. This is coming right from my attorney. The question came up on what does it mean to be age restricted? So, my attorney, Steve Harvey, Harvey and Lee gave me that information. You guys are welcome to go through it. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, now again, these are the, uh, federal guidelines.
Does someone need another? Does everybody have?
Oh, yeah, we're in a short one.
Yeah, let, let somebody read this. Oh, okay, 'cause I'd already read it. I saw A B twenties split in there like you, Ed.
Yeah, I think legally it has to be twenty, eighty, twenty.
So, yeah, it looks like this is all bound by the federal guidelines and, and no more restrictive.
You asked about materials as well. Not to interrupt you on what you're reading there, but it's definitely gonna be brick and hardy plank, no vinyl, except for the soffit areas, if you will.
Yeah.
And I'd be glad to put some elevations as part of the, um, as we go through the process. These are pretty just standard, when we say duplex, it's just two units side by side.
Sure.
And they have, you know, a foyer entry and then a two car garage between the units. If it's a triplex, which means you just have three units side by side by side. That's all.
Yeah, understand without elevations, I can tell you.
Right.
If it's single floor or split level or whatever the case may be, there's just really no...
Sure. Makes sense.
Nothing there.
But we'll be glad for conditions as far as material. That's not a problem, 'cause we want it to be really nice 'cause of this location right here, too. So, 'cause the, the price of these homes is gonna be, I'd say mid threes to mid fours easily. So, it'd be close to a couple hundred dollars a square foot. It's about eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet.
So, what are you requesting, Jonathan?
I just request colored elevations and a list of approved materials.
Sure. No problem.
I think what, what we're looking at here, uh, Mr. Bennett, so you know, I think I'm correct, if not, uh, would ask the board and staff to correct me. The last three or four people we've had come forth. They've had all this answered.
Sure.
We've gone through five sheets of pictures as an example.
Yeah. And I, and I've been a part of this.
Restrictive.
I was just here thirty days ago for the larger neighborhood down in, um, called Orchard Creek. And we do put elevations, and we have something that big, for something this small, and we, you know, we haven't really talked about, hey, requiring that, bring elevations. I mean, I could take you to one of our website and show you elevation fairly quickly. It's, it's a standard ranch home, that's why. I think, I think of, and I apologize, but I can certainly provide the board whatever you need.
Lee, I wanna ask you a question. Is this application totally complete? Complete to your satisfaction?
Um, I mean, we, we did notice some things in the, uh, in our track report. You know, when, when we sat down initially with, with the pre-application meeting, long, long, long time ago.
It's been a while.
Uh, we generally make some, some recommendations for the board, um, for the applicants to bring certain things in. We generally recommend, um, you know, at least, at a minimum, some material restrictions. Lot, lots of applicants do bring, um, elevations, uh, but we always recommend some restrictions on, uh, we don't dictate what those are.
Right.
But we just, we ask that they at least think about, um, materials, square footages, building height, something like that.
And we can put restrictions in there as well as height, so that where you know, you don't think I'm gonna come back or we're not gonna come back and switch it into this townhome community, if you will, or something like that. You can put those kind of restrictions in without having elevations here. We can just put whatever we want as far as any recommendations you guys may have as far as restrictions, materials, height of the buildings, if you will. We can make it mandatory that it's a two car garage, 'cause these will all be two car garages, um, things of that nature. We'd be glad to put restrictions in, 'cause again, this is not gonna be a cheap neighborhood at all. This, I mean, this is gonna be a complete positioning, um, for us, for the builder, if you will, to be on Providence Road and really in a great location. We wanna make sure it looks good, 'cause there's only forty-six units in here. It's not like we're building a hundred and fifty, three hundred, like we're talking about the other neighborhood.
Okay.
So, hopefully that helps.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Ever, any comments?
Uh, Lee, I hate to ask you this. Could you bring up the section where Waxaw is gonna zone for business, right down below this? And approximately, how many acres is that?
I don't believe, let me, actually, let me look at something. We may have Waxaw's zoning information.
You had it in the, uh, the zoning before as far as the color keyed maps that was in the red for Waxaw?
Yeah, so, uh, this is probably a, a better way to do this, um, 'cause we probably didn't pull in everything and, so we can use our website. We have Waxaw's, um, zoning information on our, on our website. That's pulled based on tax information, so every, occasionally, that's a little bit, that's a little bit off. This is, this is directly from Town of Waxaw. They provide us their information for our website, so we can, I go in and take a look. So, this is a, um... So, this is a, this stands for residential, I think that's multifamily, and then you've got commercial in the front. Then, this is a, these are some more commercial pieces. That's the store we were talking about. This is just to the south of this piece, the little, little house. And then there's another commercial piece right behind that. And then these are all neighborhoods in Waxaw. That's an R-four, that's an R-three. So, those are, those are generally, I believe, the way Waxaw does their zoning is, this is, this means three units. It's kinda like Charlotte's zoning. That means R-three's three units per acre, R-four's four units per acre.
The red there, the, all of that is?
Yes, that's commercial.
It's all commercial?
Yes.
And that's what Waxaw wants it to be?
That's, that's what they currently have it zoned.
Okay, that's what I was asking. And it is adjacent to the two-acre tract there now. It's gonna be, the two-acre tract that they're saying they're gonna develop as a commercial is, connects with that there.
It is connected to this piece right there.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought I saw the first time. I just wanted to see. Thank you, I appreciate that, Lee.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions? Everett? Good. Patrick?
Do you get any notification, like if Waxaw's gonna start developing that parcel, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever?
Yes. We, we have a good working relationship with most of the towns, and we do a fairly good job of communicating with each other.
How far out deep would you know, though?
For the Town of Waxaw, we are, we're actually on their technical review committee distribution list, so we find out about every single development that happens in Waxaw, which, which is good. It does clock up our email, but we, we like it.
But I'm, I'm asking like, how far out, though?
Oh, I'm sorry. They let us know about any type of development. So, we would find out when the, when they sent out the rezoning application for it to be reviewed by their technical review committee, which is usually before it even goes to the planning board. So, we would know well in advance when, before that happened.
So, right now, there's nothing going in there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And it could be like, nothing could go in there for ten, fifteen years?
Sure.
Any other comments?
That's all I have.
I'm leery of it without another entrance, and I'd prefer the other entrance have access to something other than sixteen until sixteen is, or Providence Road is, is wide. I mean, it looks like other people have gotten there first, and they've done everything they can do with a two-lane road. That's what it looks like to me.
Okay, thank you. Russell? No comments?
I too, Charlie, agree with you on a second access. I agree with the comment that one of the speakers said that, I believe that's who said, that Waxaw request must be met. I'm concerned about the full access that was brought up, because you try to turn left at Gray Byram, there's wrecks there all the time. A situation like this, it's gonna complicate matters. Those are mainly my concerns, just as an FYI for everybody. Is there any more board discussion?
One more question for Lee.
Yes, sir.
Two thousand new homes on the planning board for Waxaw, correct? Roughly?
Not a hundred percent sure about the total.
But it's large. About a ramp between a thousand and two thousand, right?
That's probably pretty accurate. There's, there's a lot in Waxaw, a lot in Union County Trail, but I've, I could go back and take a look.
It's pretty close, Eric. Right. And we're dealing with a project, well, okay, enough said, I'll say too much. We're dealing with a project that won't influence our school population, and I think that's a positive. And I wondered if Waxaw thought about that when they approved all those houses, developments.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve, a motion to deny, a motion for further study? What, what's the motion this board?
A move we deny in its present form.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Pardon? Second? The motion's been made to deny. Is there any further discussion before we call for a vote? Okay. All those in favor of denying this, raise your right hand. All those in favor of, or against denying it, raise your right hand. Okay, all right. What'd you come up with?
Four-two.
Four-two to deny? Okay. Would you like to discuss with the applicant what?
Yeah, so, just for everybody's benefit, this is not the end of the road for anything. This will go to the Board of Commissioners in first meeting, first Monday in April. If you gotta notice for this meeting, we're gonna notice for that one as well. That meeting will be on April the sixth. That will be the public hearing, and then on April the twentieth, the board will likely make a decision on that.
Okay, thank you very much. We wanna thank everybody for being here tonight. We now take up item number seven, which is the planning staff report. And as you exit, please do all your discussions outside so we can continue to carry on business with the planning board. Thank everybody for being here.
So, we continue to work on our upper plan, twenty fifty. A few people on the planning board, all those committees. There's been a lot of discussion in the committees. We are currently in our, in our visioning process, trying to figure out what vision for Union County is gonna be. I think at our last, I think it wasn't last year, I think it was planning before last, I did a quick update to the board about where we were, what those competing, kinda four, I call them competing visions were, and kinda some observations that have been made on those, the vision. The survey for those visions is on the street, so if, I know the committee's got it in email, it is on our website, please go take that survey and be honest and pick the vision that you think Union County should be. Or if you think it should be made up of a couple visions, make those comments as well. That, that will be open until the end of March. We will then take those comments back. Actually, before the comment period is over, we are gonna go back and present where we are so far to the Board of County Commissioners, just as a, kinda a speed bump, just to make sure that we're not doing anything, they don't think we're doing anything crazy or out of line. Fortunately, they're gonna be the ones to approve it. I think we won't them to make any decision, decisions at this point, that if they think we're doing anything drastically crazy, we'll tell us. But that, again, that visioning survey is on the street, please go take it. Please share it with your friends on Facebook, please email it to your friends, call them, let them know what's out there, whatever, 'cause we want as many people with their eyes on this as possible. After this is over, we'll go into the scenario planning process where we'll look at three or four different scenarios, maybe more, to help implement, help us arrive at that vision that's elected here. And that process will probably go into itself. If you have any questions about, I'm just editor.
Anything else? Emmett, it's good having you here again tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. And, and all, any comments from the board? Russell, start with you. Any closing comments?
I'm my only comment, and I think in these kinda situations, we can ask to table it till the next meeting and ask them to come back with a better presentation rather than deny them.
I didn't necessarily ask for, I said, does it need further study?
Yeah.
I did offer that. Did I not?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So, 'cause that's what happened the last time, we sent it back for more clarification. So, Charlie? Appreciate the recommendation, I'll do a better job of wording.
Money and time invested into these things that, you know, I think they made a poor presentation.
They did.
But I think in return, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of people here screaming and hollering tonight, and...
No.
The, you know, that little tiny pocket of land, you know, is landlocked around a ton of housing. And so, you know, that, that forty houses ain't gonna change.
They never answered my question though about that house that's back there, 'cause they just sold it.
Well, they did that to not have to put a street in. I guarantee you. But, yeah, sure they did. There's no doubt they did. They sold that house off so they wouldn't have to put a street in. So, I, I figured that out right out of the box.
And I also said, we, we generally do, on the staff level, when they come in and meet with us, we recommend that they have good presentation answers to... 'Cause, 'cause, you know, we, you know, Bjorn and I, and Dick was here, we, you know, we know what, usually what the questions from the board is gonna be, and we'll, we'll kinda lead them.
It's like the one, that last one, you told them, said, "Don't take it to the planning board."
I did. But we'll, we'll tell them, you know, you need to think about these things when you're presenting to planning board and board commissioners.
Sure.
And we have our things that we wanna see too. Most of these things are good, just good planning.
Good comment, Russell, thank you.
Well, the, the need is definitely for, that age of housing is wherever it's gonna be in Union County.
We need it.
We have the need, we just gotta plan well.
Yeah.
And I think, but that's a, you know, that piece of land's just landlocked in there.
It is.
It's gonna be, you know, somebody's gonna develop it sooner or later, whether it's these folks or somebody else, and...
Charlie?
I think it'll get developed, it'll get developed when they widen the road. That road's a ridiculous thing. To even think about putting one more house on, on Providence Road to me is just foolish. And, and, and Union County is going broke with all these residences. And just because somebody's gonna stick a sewer line in the ground and everybody just, poosh, down there because of the sewer line, uh-uh. No, I'm not interested in doing that, hunting people running into each other and hurting each other on these roads. No. The roads, the roads, the stoppage.
Patrick?
I agree with Russell. I mean, why was it, it was postponed, postponed what, twice? Three times? They took it off the table? Do we know why?
Yes, I'm trying to recall it, I was trying to recall it by the time you...
It just, to me, it just...
Probably has something to do with that first engineer that's not there anymore.
So, so one of them had to do with their advertising for the community meeting. When they initially advertised, they called, they asked for B-three, and that's what was on their application. So, we didn't have any reason to question their, their advertising for the community meeting. The day, I think the day it was supposed to come to the planning board the first time, they realized that they didn't advertise their community meeting, right? So, I told them, "Well, you need to redo it." So, that's why they redid it, and then they just didn't have time between their second community meeting and the last planning board meeting to get it on each other.
And to me, it just, it felt like it was incomplete. I know you said it was completed in your step, and, you know, according to you. But to me, I mean, it seems like a lot of other ones that have come in, they've had the elevations, like Jonathan said, they showed pictures of what it's gonna look like, the streets and everything. I mean, this, we're just looking at a map.
Yeah.
Trying to figure everything out.
Yeah.
And then they're, they're, they're hoping that Waxaw develops that land below so that they can connect into it for, for more acres to it. And again, like Russell, that, that street in the back there, they sold that property off, and you have to get that, that landowner to agree to put a road through. What happens if he doesn't? Or she doesn't? Then it's, I mean, to me, it's just like it was just...
They shot themselves in the foot, is what they did.
Everett?
No comment.
Jonathan, any more?
Just, I do agree with, with Russell to a great degree. And again, you know, a little here, a little there, and if you don't have access somewhere other than Providence, let's get one ten-acre parcel, another ten-acre, forty-six homes here, fifty there, thirty there. Before you know it, you've got a bigger problem. It wasn't very well planned out, and I understand that it's a very small development, but it would've been nice to have a little more spelled out there. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to what they were presenting if they had their ducks in a row a little better.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Patrick, we have a second?
Second.
Jonathan, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned at eight twenty-five, six, seven.
Only they were not.
I actually wasn't able to make it to the committee. The other day, I...
I think it needed to be chopped down.
I was saying, I'm a senior, so I stayed in the office.
I think go in.
The board does a really good job.
They should've asked us to table it till they were better prepared. 'Cause I think the biggest thing is, we just need...